Okay, everybody ready?
I'm ready.
Do it. So, we will start the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. This meeting will be held remotely via telephone and Zoom under... Let me put my glasses on. And Zoom video conferencing pursuant to the Governor's Stay Home, Stay Healthy Proclamation, number 2-25 as amended. Are you good?
Yes.
Okay. So, I am going to call this meeting to order. It is now 6:02, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sorry, I just lost my... Just lost my agenda. I don't know where it went. What's the first item on the agenda, Nick?
It is audience comments, and before we do that, if I may, we have a number of members of the public here tonight, and if you are wanting to testify on the Ruby Creek Subarea Plan, now is not the time for that. This would be other comments for items that are not on the agenda or on the agenda but aren't part of the public hearing. So, are there any public comments not related to the Ruby Creek Public Hearing?
Seeing none, um, let's move on to the approval of the minutes from June 2nd, 2020.
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Your second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Technically, all of them since I wasn't here.
So, item four, or number four business items, A, Ruby Creek Neighborhood Subarea Plan and Development Regulations. So, first up is discussion on the Ruby Creek Neighborhood.
So, um, tonight, we had scheduled a public hearing on the Ruby Creek Subarea Plan, and before we get to that public hearing, I'll just refresh everybody's memory on how we got here and what the purpose of tonight's meeting is. We started the process of creating a Ruby Creek Neighborhood Plan, really, in November of 2019, and we did that because our comprehensive plan identifies the Ruby Creek area as a countywide center, which means that it is a designated area to plan for additional growth as the city grows. And so, we have several of these centers scattered around the city, and this is one of the first centers that we are preparing a new subarea plan for. The plan started in November, as I mentioned, right before coronavirus hit, obviously, and so, when we initially started this process, we had planned some open houses and some interaction with the neighborhood, and that had to be put on hold. We did do an online survey, and we've had presentations at numerous planning commission meetings over the last several months, and we gave a thorough presentation of the draft plan last month at the July Planning Commission Meeting. So, the plan has broken the neighborhood down into three pieces. There's a north end, which is the area between Hovde Road and Ruby Creek itself. There's the middle section from Sedgwick to the Ruby Creek, the water feature Ruby Creek. And then, there's the south end that includes the Albertsons, the Sinclair Apartments, and areas to the south. And so, this plan looked at what... We looked at a number of alternatives for how this area could be developed, and the area is really constrained by Blackjack Creek, by Ruby Creek, and the critical areas, floodplains, and State Route 16. And so, we hired a consultant to do some initial concept planning with us to come up with some alternatives, and as we proceeded, we realized that all of these constraints really limited the creativity with how the area could be laid out, and instead, we started focusing on what are the goals for the neighborhood, such as walkability, providing transportation improvements to make sure that people can get in and out of the neighborhood, and making a place where people would like to live and shop that's consistent with the the Center's guidance that comes from the Puget Sound Regional Council and as adopted in our countywide planning policies. So, the neighborhood plan really looked to sort of coordinate development along the Sydney Road Corridor to create sort of a somewhat pedestrian-oriented downtown area along the road, and then, it provided some alternatives for how the back halves of some of these properties could develop. And most notably, there's a proposed Kitsap Transit Park and Ride as an alternative, which could be built instead of additional housing in the neighborhood. And all of the inform... all of the review was based on the GIS data prepared by Kitsap County, and so, we didn't actually go out and hire a geologist or a wetland biologist. All of that has to be done as development gets proposed, but at least some of the site plans that are in the Ruby Creek Plan are based on actual development concepts put together by property owners where they are trying to move forward with development. And this is really trying to cohesively look at all the services, sewer, water, traffic, stormwater, protecting the environment, parks, and really put it together in a cohesive plan. So, that's what we have presented tonight. So, with that said, I think that we should open this up and take public testimony. It looks like, I believe that there are five or six members of the public who wish to testify, and so, before we open the hearing, I'd like to ask, I'm going to call on everybody by name and ask whether they want to testify so that I can take down their information on my notepad, and then, and then we'll take them in order once we open the hearing. So, I see Ron Rice, you're listed first of the members of the public on my screen. Would you like to testify tonight? You're going to have to unmute yourself. Okay, not hearing from Mr. Rice. There's somebody named...
Tell him how to unmute it.
Oh, there you are, okay.
No, I've just, this is Dick Brown. Just tell Ron how to unmute it. Ron, press star six. I guess it isn't.
I think it's star four.
I hit star six and got you, I don't know.
Uh, let me look up the instruction real quick.
Okay.
Oh, I'm seeing star nine.
Okay.
Well, either Ron is not hearing us, or there you go. Nope, yeah, there he is. Mr. Rice, are you there?
Maybe we could circle around and come back.
Yeah, so, um, the next person I have on my list, Sharon Wheeler, and I saw someone who was also holding a phone with somebody else possibly tuning in. Were you interested in testifying today?
Well, I'm her son, Jake Hancock, she's on the phone here.
Uh, you're, you're very, it's very hard to hear you. I don't know if you can get closer to the microphone or adjust the volume on the microphone. Not very well. Is everybody else having the same trouble?
Can't hear him at all.
You may want to call in using your phone to the number on the top of the agenda for the meeting. Do you have that available to you?
Uh, no, I, no, I don't. Could you, could you use me and write it down?
The, the dial-in number, do you have a pen?
Yes.
It's 253-215-8782. Okay. Next, I heard from, I heard Dick Brown. I assume, Mr. Brown, that you would like to testify today?
Yes.
Okay. Um, next, I have Ted Rice. Ted, did you wish to testify today?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, next, Kat Serenson?
Hi, Nick, no, I did not wish to testify.
Thank you. And then, Annette Nitz?
I do not need to testify, thank you.
All right. Is there anybody from the public that I missed here?
I also see Karen Anderson.
Oh, yes, Karen, did...
Yeah, I don't need to testify, thank you.
All right. And so, um, I'm going to wait for, uh, here's... All right, can you hear us now?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you guys.
Okay, what was your name?
Uh, can you... Uh, I'm Jake Hancock, I'm Sharon Wheeler's son. I will, I'm on the phone, basically, she's... Uh, she can't figure out a way to be on the phone and have me at the same time, so I'm, I'm just here, I guess.
Okay, did you want to testify today?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I live very close to the area proposed, yeah, I, I want to say some stuff, yes.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll call on you in that order. So, I'm going to go ahead and start with Mr. Right, uh, Annette, you have to actually open the hearing now.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the Ruby Creek Neighborhood Sub... Suburbri... Oh, wait a minute, sorry. For the Ruby Creek Ne... Ruby Creek Neighborhood Subarea Plan and Development Regulations. Sorry.
All right, so, the first person I had on my list was Ron Rice. So, Ron, if you can hear us, it is now...
He's not there. I called him on the other line, and, and Ron said he didn't have anything to say.
Okay.
Well, I'll speak for Ron.
Okay, Mr. Brown, you'd like to testify?
I've been working on this project since the early 90s. I got it, uh, placed in the urban growth boundary, I zoned it, I fought Charlotte Greedo three different times, who tried to keep it in rural, and I annexed to the city of Port Orchard. And I was surprised to get any information from you guys after you decided what you want to do with mine and my partner's property, that you didn't even ask what we had planned or what we were going to do, and whether or not part of our property is going to be used for either a park and ride or a park, which I see on your drawings. Yes, I have a lot to say about it. I've been paying on this thing for 20-plus years. So, I'm, wanted to stay 100% commercial on our corridor, Rice, uh, Rice and Birdwell, Brown, Anderson. We want to use our property as commercial. It's 35 acres minus the Tallman piece, and I'm not sure what, what they're doing on the Krieger piece, but I would imagine we want to see, save, save this property for shopping.
Can, can you tell me where your property is?
It's a, it's a five-acre parcel next to the gas station that runs all the way to Lowe's.
Okay, thank you.
Ron Rice is the corner piece, uh, mine, my partner's pieces, and then Catherine Rice represents her mother, she has the next piece over, then there's Krieger. And Krieger is, is of course the, I think it's 15 or 20 acres.
So, I believe that's Properties C, D, and E on Figure 12 of the plan.
I've got that plan around here someplace. We would only ask as owners that you respect our property rights and you conclude us in the conversation, and that you don't design stuff without finding out we're interested in selling it for that purpose. I think that would only be respectful to us.
Okay, was there anything further, Mr. Brown?
Yes, uh? I'm here.
Yeah, this, this is your opportunity to provide testimony. So, any, anything that you have to say, now is the time to say it, and then, um, the planning commission can deliberate.
Well, did you hear what I had to say, or did, did it come through?
Yes, it came through.
Okay. I don't mind the Tallman piece, which I put together and got annexed, and John Johnson bought it from Tallman, and I understand they have a project on that. Then, when I started there, Ruby Creek had a 50-foot setback, and now it's like 200 feet. Uh, the next piece over, I listed it, it belonged to Will Grandquist, and, and then, the Krieger family bought it, and then, uh, Ron Rice owned the next piece over towards the intersection, and I then, I, he ended up giving it to his wife. The next piece over belongs to me, and the other piece that butts Sedgwick and Sydney belongs to Ron Rice, and he goes all the way across the creek and up to Lowe's. And so, we had good intentions of selling it to Target at one time. The deal was put together. Some of the property owners got too greedy, and, uh, Target walked. Uh, so, it's been sitting there every, every since, and, uh, we would like to do a commercial project on it. We have several interested parties, more so now than before, because the intersection is being, hammered right now with all the new housing that's going to go in. We came up with the park and ride with John Clausen. I started talking to John and sort of Ron Rice, uh, years ago about putting the park and ride there, and, uh, we need at the Lowe's Lite, a roundabout to go across the creek to, to provide a pressure relief valve for the intersection. There is no way we're, we're going to be able to develop around there without getting a better intersection. There is no way we're going to get the traffic through. Uh, so, when we did the Sydney Corridor Plan, there was a pressure relief valve that went out to Hovde Road and then across Pat Waters' property, uh, across the road linking, um, Glenwood Cut Off Road. And, um, I, I participated in the plan, and, and I didn't really mind it. Of course, now it's different because the apartment complex is going to go on to Tallman Johnson Property. And so, one of my main concerns is that we make sure that we can get traffic through the intersection. We got maybe a thousand houses going to come through there. There'll be 300 on the hillside with, and the back entrance to McCormick, and that's a big deal. Also, um, people coming off of Berry Lake Drive need to be able to get to the freeway and not be jammed up in the intersection. Uh, so, um, also, there was a water line that was destined to go up and hook to the new, well, reserve on top of Sedgwick Hill. I don't know what happened to that. Be nice if it went to backways through McCormick and came down the hill, but if it can't, originally, when I was working with Larry, it was going to go down Hovde Road and cross the freeway. So, um, and of course, Rush ran a pressure main up to the Junior High School and improved that, but I'm not sure we can take all the sewage through there. And so, I'm not sure what else to say, other than I want to get my money out of the property, and I want to sell it.
Thank you for testifying today.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, next, I think we have Jake Hancock.
Uh, yeah, yeah, is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay, so, now, first of all, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta confess something. I was completely nervous up until about two weeks ago. And and, uh, I, I, obviously, I don't know a lot about county zoning laws, regulations, riposte, I, I don't know any of that stuff, so, there's, there's that for all. But I want to say, and also on behalf of my mother, Sharon Wheeler, uh, we've been, we've been, uh, long-time residents, about 10 years here, and, uh, we're, we, we would be for, uh, for a park and ride type thing, or a major store like Target, but for smaller shops, we're, we're not sure. I mean, the thing is, you can, you can build a lot of low-income housing, if I understand it, but first of all, is that correct? Um, is that right, a lot of...
About, anyone can build low-income housing, it's not specifically called out for here. There's, um, there is one goal related to, uh, providing incentives for affordable housing, which is available to people making within 80 and 115% of the median income.
Uh, okay, okay. Cool, and, uh, well, anyways, I guess the commercial zone, so, what I want to underst... So, what, what I understand is if you have a bunch of small shops, I mean, first of all, just as far as I understand, right now with everything going on, that seems like a risky investment, so basically, what I would think is you're getting stuff like Target, and like you were saying, Walmart, and then big stuff like that, basically. That's, that's actually, as I understand, right? So, considering now, I mean, that, that would be okay, but there's one problem, and that is, I don't, I don't think any amount of road widening, short and short of making this basically a freeway, would be able to relieve any kind of traffic in this area. The, the traffic is too bad as, as it is now. And when you're out here at night, the amount of, let's, let's just say, sketchy people walking by your driveway and possibly near your house is also seriously becoming problematic here. Now, I have a large, open property, I would have to invest just a whole, a whole ox in fences and security alarms and cameras and all kinds of stuff to act, to actually, not, not just feel safe, but to actually be safe where I am right now. And I'm, I'm, I'm quite close on that point as it is now, without the development plan, so I'm really worried about that. So, yeah, I think that's all I have to say for now.
Um, listen, Hancock, where, um, where do you live? Do you have a, an address or a general location you'd like to share?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm right next to the church, uh, Church of Nazarene, that one.
Okay. Okay, next on the list, um, Annette Nitz, did you want to testify?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, and I, Karen Anderson, I think you said you did not want to testify, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, if there's anyone else who wishes to testify, please speak up now. Okay, Annette?
So, is this a two-part thing? Am I closing the number one, and then we're going to open number two?
Um, you can close number one, and then you're going to deliberate on number one and ask questions.
Okay, so, you, we want to split them up, that's what I'm asking.
Correct, so you can go ahead and close the hearing here.
Okay, so, at this time, I'm going to, um, close the public hearing for Ruby Creek Neighborhood Subarea Plan, and now, we'll start the discussion. Anybody?
So, planning...
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, what, what, what is this? Is this just an open discussion?
This, this is now for the planning commissioners, the public portion of the meeting is closed.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, before we, we get into discussion, just a reminder, tonight, you have a draft plan, and you have the opportunity to discuss the plan, ask questions about the plan, make recommendations concerning the plan and whether amendments need to be made, whether you want to recommend that the City Council approve it. So, there's any number of things that you can do now, and you may want a month to think about it, or, um, this is your opportunity to talk and, and figure out what you want to do next.
So, did we talk to the property owners when we developed this plan?
We did, um, we did mail notice and do a survey concerning plan development. We did not get a real thorough response, and I think part of the problem is there's only about 20 or 30 different property owners in the subarea, and then, we did send notice to everyone who lives in the existing apartments at the Sedgwick Landing and the Sinclair. But I think just the nature of apartments and the people who live there, maybe they don't have roots here, or they're, they, they came here to work, or, or who knows what, but there wasn't a whole lot of participation, and with coronavirus, we really couldn't, uh, schedule the open house we had intended to, so, we decided to present the plan publicly and see what the public thought, and we may need to have more public hearings on this. It really depends on the planning commissions feeling on things and recommend, their recommendation.
So, when you send out notices to addresses, are you sending them to the homeowner or to the, say, if there's a renter in that house? Or does it go to both?
With to, it went to the property owner.
Okay.
We get, we get our addresses from the Kitsap County Assessor.
Yeah, with the, with the exception of the apartments, which we talked to the managers of the apartments to get notice to the tenants, but there's only 10 or 11 houses in total in the subarea, so, um, and I, I don't know that, I don't know whether any of those are rented, we just don't have any information on them.
Okay, I just wasn't sure how that worked.
For, for the survey, um, the survey went to everyone inside, every owner inside the boundaries of the Ruby Creek Subarea. The notice of hearing went to all property owners in the subarea, plus every property owner within 800 feet of the boundary, so that boundary was expanded for the notice of hearing.
Okay. So, was there any urgency behind, um, getting this passed, or? Like, what's the timeline you had in your head, Nick?
Well, so, the, the Development Regulations, which is the next item on the agenda, they're, they're pretty short, but we have to have a hearing on that as well. So, waiting a month isn't going to hurt anything, but I think the, really, the longer we wait to take action, the more opportunity there is for somebody to come in and do something that the city doesn't want in the area, because they can file an application tomorrow and, um, and take things in a direction or propose a use that maybe isn't something that we want there long-term. Although, I think the regulations are, you know, they're not actually changing very significantly in terms of the types of uses. It's more in how the sites are laid out, um, more than anything. So, I, I think it would be reasonable to, if you would like to see changes or talk about it more, you could have a, you could continue this to the next meeting and talk about it, but if, if you don't have any suggested changes or questions or issues that you'd like to discuss, then it's, um, it's just, it's just you guys deliberating about whether you want to move forward with this or not.
Right. I'm just taking Mr. Brown's testimony, um, keeping it in mind, and I know that we've already gone past the public hearing portion of it, but it'd be interesting to hear, what parts of the plan did he object to, or was, it was the fact that we didn't go and speak to him directly that he objected to?
Right, so, we, um, so I, I did want to actually speak to some of the things that were said in the public hearing portion. I think the two big concerns I heard were traffic, and I wanted to address that directly, because this plan proposes, number one, to widen and improve Sydney from, uh, the north end of the subarea to the south end of the subarea. And the plan also, and, and that's already in our, our transportation plan, we also have a plan to widen Sedgwick Road West, so between 16 and Sedgwick, or Sydney, is to be widened with additional lanes and sidewalks. And so, the, the backup that you see at Lowe's today will be partially fixed by a city project to widen the city's portion of the road, but then, Wash Dot also has it on their project list to redo the interchange at Sedgwick and to make that, that overpass function and, uh, and handle more traffic. So, both of those things are in the plan. We did look at the out, the possibility of a roundabout at Lowe's or a, a signal at Lowe's that would cross over and tie into either Hovde, Hovde or Sydney, and the width of the floodplain combined with the cost of bridging Blackjack Creek, it's, it's a 15 or a $20 million project, and we didn't feel that that project had significant advantages over just widening Sedgwick Road. over just widening Sedgwick Road between that same stretch. And so we thought it was a better use of, of city funds, which transportation funding is very limited, to focus on the Sedgwick Corridor and the Sydney Corridor as opposed to building a new road in addition to those two existing roads that we have to maintain. The I did hear concerns also about, you know, the plans for potentially building a Target here. And Mr. Rice actually contacted me prior to the hearing. I talked to him about two weeks ago. That's Ron Rice. And he was, he was concerned about the critical area maps, and specifically some of the figures that we had in the plan. And so one of the things we did as a result of his phone call was we added a disclaimer at the beginning of the plan that basically says that we, you know, none of the maps in this plan are based on an actual wetland delineation, and that any development would have to prepare a wetland delineation to determine what portion of the site is or is not developable. We're simply using the existing data that we have to make a best estimate of how much capacity there is within the subarea for development. And so we're not saying that you can't build on those areas. We're just saying that based on the data we have, it appears that to build on them, you're going to have to do enough mitigation to where it probably isn't cost-effective. But, but again, that's to be determined as part of a future process, not as part of the, the initial planning process. We would also have to have permission from owners to go on property to do that kind of analysis. And so that wasn't something that we were seeking as part of this plan. We were just using the, the county's database, which is adopted as part of our code.
Is it proper for me to add anything?
Not outside of the public hearing unless the Planning Commission has a question. But it's up to the Chair.
I'm good with hearing what he has to say.
Okay.
What I wanted to say is, when, when we had Target, and of course, they're gone. The young man was referring to a, to a big box. We haven't had so much of that as, as we've had interest in restaurants, auto parts stores, so on and so, so forth. You know, community items. As far as the, the wetlands go, when we were doing the Target store, we spent about 100, 125 to 150,000 on delineating wetlands and putting in drainage and so on and so forth. So we've, we've done a lot of that, and we, and I don't know. I don't want to turn it into a park, that's for sure, after spending the money, of course. That, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
So concerning the, the park, the park is actually shown further to the north on the Krieger property at the confluence of Blackjack and Ruby Creek, where you do have pretty significant buffers in place. And anytime you do a subarea plan like this, part of the criteria that comes from PSRC and in the countywide planning policies is that this is a cohesive neighborhood that offers all the typical services that somebody would want in a neighborhood, which would include parks. And so the exact location of a park would have to be pinned down, and it's largely going to be based on where the floodplain mapping ends up, because that is a, a mapped floodplain there. And so we, we were talking about the plan as being, the floodplain can be used as a park, and it may flood periodically, but it can be designed so that it, it's, it adapts to changing environmental conditions. We weren't looking to use the prime developable area for a park, except for potentially like a restroom building and some parking. But of course, this, we're working on a Parks Plan at the same time that we're developing this plan. And so putting a park in this neighborhood is something that also has to go into our Parks Plan going forward.
Is there any more discussion on this one?
Yeah, I'm just curious. If, if the Target plan fell through, which it did, and he spoke of auto parts, stores, restaurants, things like that, how would this plan take away from, from those businesses coming in regardless?
So retail and restaurants are both allowed uses in the commercial corridor, the commercial mixed use, and the commercial heavy zone. Auto parts store, as long as it's purely retail, is allowed. If it is, if they were doing actual service, then you run into issues of zoning where it is not allowed, except in the commercial heavy zone, which is the areas where we've, we've zoned in our code for like big box retail, gas stations, et cetera. But restaurants are absolutely encouraged. And we looked at the sort of the existing pattern of retail development in the neighborhood. And if you look at the building footprints, they're very similar to the shopping center at the northwest corner of Sydney and Sedgwick. It's just the buildings are multi-story and would have additional parking requirements. And that we're also really trying to make the streetscape a walkable place, so that if you live in the Sydney apartments, you can walk up to the restaurant rather than driving to the restaurant and having to provide so much extra parking.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
Hey, Nick.
Yes.
Do you have, do you have any idea of the Wash Dot's schedule on the revamping of the 16 interchange there?
It's, it's very closely tied to the legislature's schedule on when they're going to pass a capital budget. It was actually in a capital budget a year ago, and then the legislature adjourned without voting on that package. And so I think it's, it's really a matter of us keeping it on the forefront of our lobbying agenda and making sure that the funding comes from the legislature to build that project. So you know, I wish I could say it was two to three years away. It could be, but it really depends on things that are outside of our control.
All right, thanks. And, and you know, naturally, we don't want to wait until Wash Dot decides to fund this project and get started on it, correct?
Correct. And sometimes, sometimes the problem has to get worse before Wash Dot will actually take action.
Okay, I've got a question for Dick, if he's still on the line. Mr. Brown, you mentioned you didn't want your property to become a park. But are you all, are you in approval of your property becoming a park and ride itself?
Yes. I am. The lower portion, Mr. Rice, and Mrs. Rice, and myself, and my partners, are interested in selling to Kitsap Transit. If not that, then in the future, we would like to do some other building that would fit within the floodplain. There's plenty of mitigation opportunities, walkways along the creek. The other side of the creek had two bridges that went to it with the cows went over. And so that could be reclaimed and then turned into estuary. So I had spoke to Steve Seago yesterday or the day before about, about what might he be able to do there to recapture some of the land and turn some of it into mitigation property. So I'm all for, you know, we've been talking to John Clausen about this for like three or four years. We did a design of the park and ride already that, that we did. Not that he needs to use it, but I thought it was good. But you need to be, if you do a park and ride there, you need to be able to get out. And I don't see any other way. You can't turn it back, and you would have to go to Sydney over Neesmond. Or you have to go back to the intersection to go back on the freeway. There has to be some others, something else we can do. And that would be a roundabout and a footprint bridge going across the creek. And they've been done up on the Olympic Peninsula very effectively by the Indian tribes, as, as well as some designer that I talked to in Belfair. So we could make a small footprint and put that in there and come right into the park and ride and go right back on the freeway. That'd be wonderful. But like, like he said, it, it isn't something that's cheap. But it's, it would work.
All right, thanks, Mr. Brown. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nick, with the proposed uses that Mr. Brown has for his property, do you see that those are in conflict with this plan? Because I don't.
Well, the, the park and ride certainly is not in conflict, because it's explicitly called out as an alternative. The, if you're talking about big box retail, the zoning currently doesn't allow big box retail, and it also wouldn't allow it under the plan. So we're not, we're not proposing to create zoning that would allow for a Target. And quite frankly, I don't believe that there's enough room to actually build a Target on the three properties that he's speaking about. With the Krieger property, it's, it's potentially possible. But I think the, the mitigation that would be required to use the floodplain in the, any of the buffers would be really expensive. So much so that I think that they would probably look at other sites that are more easily developed.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, let's, can we move on to the next one?
Well-
Stephanie, I just, just throw my two cents in there. I, I myself am not comfortable on making any determination tonight on this project. I would like to learn a little more about it. But you know, if rest of the Planning Commission feels differently, then, then obviously we move forward. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
So I feel the same way as you do, Stephanie. But I had a question. Nick, can we open up the second one, have a discussion on that, and then decide what we want to do? Or do we have to like to move on forward?
I, it sounds like you guys probably want to chew on this for a month and talk about it in September again.
I think so.
Yeah, definitely.
So, yeah, that's, that's not a problem. We can move this to the agenda for September. I believe it's the, the first of September.
But would we do the, the second part of this discussion tonight?
Yeah, and with, and the second portion of the discussion tonight will still take place. And that will actually go forward for a hearing in September. So we could actually advertise that, and we could reopen the hearing on the plan and conduct the hearing on the development regulations and do it all as a package.
Okay, perfect. You guys good with that?
Do we need to move the table, the discussion, or?
No, that was just kind of, it's just a general, it's just a kind of question to you.
I just asked for a clarification. So, so the, the individuals who have testified, we do not believe that, that at the moment, our current subarea plan is in conflict with any potential use. And that were, were big box retail considered, it's currently not permitted by zone, existing zones, zoning regs.
That's correct.
So there, if were we to pass the plan, I'm not saying we should, there, there is no necessary conflict. The investors who own these properties will still be able to sell the properties, still to the same parties under the existing code and regulation. It's just a question of comfort. Is that, is that your understanding, Nick?
Yeah, that's, that is correct. And actually, the, the new plan does provide for some increased height over what's currently allowed. So you're actually getting more height allowance and a reduced setback along Sydney, because it is now a storefront street where you bring the buildings out to the street. So potentially, because there's constraints on the east side, the buildings are being brought that much closer to Sydney.
Thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Okay, any more discussion on the subarea plan? All right, so let's move on to the Ruby Creek Neighborhood Development Regulations. For the discussion.
So I touched on this at the last meeting, and these are still in draft form. And since that meeting, we have refined them. But really, this is a very short ordinance to implement the draft plan. And it involves amending the zoning map, because we're introducing the, the DMU zone along Sydney for the first 200 feet of depth along the, the road. It is also amending the use table for a handful of uses, and specifically the park and ride, the transit park and ride. Breweries and distilleries are more restrictive in the underlying zone. This is opening up potentially for an additional use that isn't there today. It also is clarifying that drive-throughs are permitted outright in the commercial corridor zone, which the Rice and Mr. Brown's properties are commercial corridor. So those are, those are not conditional uses like they are under the, the base zoning. It's allowing a height in the zone, a five-story height as the standard. And normally, height is controversial, but this is one of the few areas of the city where there's no neighbors whose views are being blocked or where there's, there's really a whole lot of impact, because the development hasn't really occurred. It's mostly undeveloped in the area. So currently, you get three stories in the zone, but this is giving you five. And, and you can actually get even a height bonus through the Transfer of Development Right program. And that's, that's in place today, or, and will continue to be in place. But this just makes it easier to build a taller building in the area. And then the, the last two amendments are figures from the zoning regulations. There are, we adopted a self-storage overlay district for the, the self-storage type units as a use are not really great neighbors when it comes to creating a walkable, energized commercial environment. And so a few of the properties in the subarea allowed storage, and we're making sure that those are being pushed a little bit further to the north. And so this is actually taking the storage use away from some of the properties in the north end of the subarea. And then finally, section five of the, of the draft code change would change the block frontage designation of Sydney to make it a storefront street between Ruby Creek and the existing development on Sydney. And so that is really encouraging buildings to be brought out to the street for that small section. And is also identifying a prominent intersection in the mid-block, which is where we're seeking to provide access to all properties for, so that driveways are aligned, and it makes for pedestrian crossings that are safer than what is, would be, would occur if, if the driveways are offset and not part of a somewhat controlled intersection. So it's, it's a really short ordinance to implement the plan. If you have any questions tonight, I'm happy to take those. But the proposal would be to go forward with the hearing on the regulations to implement the plan next meeting, to take testimony on this, this portion of the proposal.
All righty. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing.
Oh, there's no public-
Oh, wait, no, 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 no. Sorry, I was looking at the next one down. Any discussion?
Are you asking for public testimony?
No, we're just doing, just a general discussion.
Okay.
So we're going to have a public hearing on this at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Mr. Brown? Next meeting will be a public hearing for it.
Okay.
Thank you. And that means there will also be a note, another, another notice of hearing sent out to everyone, and we will repeat the same boundaries. If there's anyone who called in tonight, who is calling in like they heard through it by word of mouth or some other means, they want to get on the mailing list to get a notice of hearing, please come, contact the department after this meeting, so I can get you on my mailing list if you're not already on it. Otherwise, you'll get the notice of public hearing in the mail, same as you did before.
Carrie, can you let me know, am I contacting you directly, or who am I contacting for that?
You can contact me directly, or you can, the easiest way might be to just send an email with your mailing address, and that's to planning@cityofportorchard.us.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
So Carrie, just a quick, when you, when you put a notice out, and I know that you mail them out, do you ever like- and I know that you mail them out, do you ever like just hang a public notice like at the like the Greatons or anything like that, the little stores that? So maybe people that live just a little farther out, they might want something to say about it, but they wouldn't know about it. Or do you like sometimes you post those big posters? I don't know why, you know, I don't know what the difference would be. But is there any way just to somehow get the word out? Because it doesn't seem like it really went out to that many people that that really had a concern.
Well, we did put it out on Facebook, and that's probably our most effective tool for getting the word out on something like this. When you see those public notice signs, those are related to specific project applications. This is a bigger planning project, and so we don't actually own any of the property where we would put the signs. And and we, in terms of other outreach tools, I mean, we can look at it, seeing if the we can talk to our public relations person and see if they have any other ideas for how to get the word out. But we typically don't go around posting on bulletin boards or things like that.
I just wonder, because there's like no houses or not a lot of houses right there. And I don't know that people would just look at the Port Orchard Facebook page to if you know, if they didn't know something was coming up. But it was just a suggestion, I just try to get more public comment on it.
There's also a legal ad every time in our newspaper of record, but admittedly, not that many people are looking in the legal ads.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
I know. This meeting was pretty exciting. This is the most public testimony we've had in a long time.
Okay, so where are we? What do we? So we're going to have a public hearing on this next on the, did you say September 1st?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll have more discussion on the the subarea plan. Is that kind of what our thoughts are?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So are we moving on then to the next item on the agenda? Was there more comments?
Yes, let's let's move to the next items.
Okay, so we'll move on to business item B, discussion. And there's a public hearing through the ADU code revisions.
Nick, I wonder if you can share my screen? Because I emailed the redline version of the ADU code to the Planning Commission this afternoon, but they may not have seen it. And it occurred to me, it might be easier for them to go through this in redline rather than in the ordinance form that was mailed to them. Are you able to share my screen?
I've made you the host of the meeting, so you can now share.
Let me see. Oh, gosh, I have lots and lots. Can anybody see it?
Yes.
Yes, I can see it.
The ADU code? Fantastic. Okay, I'm actually working on two screens, so I wasn't sure. I can't see any of you guys now. Okay, so we discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, but since a number of the planning commissioners weren't there, I'll just go through it all again. One of our council members, Fred Chang, had some concerns about the current accessory dwelling unit or ADU code in Title 20. He was concerned that some of the provisions that we have in there right now might make it a little restrictive or a little difficult for people who want to actually build ADUs do so. And he asked us to take a look at some of the provisions that could make it a little bit easier for people who want to do this. And he had a number of suggestions. Then we got also had a suggestion or two from Planning Commission members when we brought up this topic. So I'll just go through these one by one. And then and these are these are also incorporated into the ordinance that you have in your packet. It's the exact same things. It's just looking at these in redline, I think, might be a little easier just to pull out the changes. In the general requirements for ADUs, this was something that Commissioner Bernstein had suggested, and we agreed this was a good idea. We did not have a a restriction on the number of ADUs per lot. I think we just thought, well, it's it's obvious it should be one. But it is restricted to one, and so we've spelled it out in here that only one ADU, whether that's an attached dwelling within an existing house or it's a backyard cottage, a detached ADU, is permitted on a lot. And then in the next one down, under section five, Fred, Councilmember Chang had been concerned that we needed some language in here that clarified that there was nothing in the ADU code that was meant to prohibit or discourage people from renting out an ADU if the owner occupied the property and the owner wanted to also have a roommate or to house share with someone else. And that is correct. We were not trying to discourage them. As long as the property owner maintains their legal residence in either the ADU or the main house, they are certainly welcome to have renters, roommates, anything like that in their legal residence. So we've added language here to make sure that that is clear. Moving down onto page two. Councilmember Chang pointed out that the provision that we had that said that ADUs have to be connected to the utilities of the main residence and could not have separately built services, that could be very difficult for some people. You don't really know how much people are going to use for electricity. Many people have different services that they subscribe to for internet or cable television, case by case pay per services, and it's very hard to do individual billing in this case. And again, that could be discouraging people who would otherwise want to have an ADU. And we we agree that that may be a little bit too restrictive, so we've removed that requirement from the code. Moving down to page three, under section six, there was a question about how lot coverage was calculated and also how setbacks and other requirements for the zone were calculated. And so we just wanted to clarify that when you are looking at maximum lot coverage for a lot, and you're thinking about building especially a detached ADU, you're looking at the ADU, the primary single-family dwelling and all accessory buildings when calculating that that max that lot coverage. And so the ADU, the accessory buildings, everything is also required to meet the the required setbacks for the zone and for the accessory building type. So basically, anything that applies in the zone without the ADU is going to continue to apply in the zone once you have your, once you come forward with a proposal to build an ADU. Down at the bottom of page three, we struck out section 10. This was a section that said that if you have a detached ADU, it could be the only accessory structure that you had on the parcel. This was very restrictive because basically this meant you couldn't have anything on your property as an accessory building that was larger than a small tool shed under 200 square feet. So this was a problem for someone who wanted to have a detached garage or any other substantive building on their site. And so we agreed that this was very restrictive, and we removed it. And we think that that's also going to be more more helpful in providing flexibility to property owners. So those are, that's the summary of the revisions that we've made to the code, and I'm happy to go through any questions that the commissioners may have or the members of the public.
So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on ADU code revisions. Anybody wish to comment? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing for the ADU code revisions. We can have a discussion.
Well, I love the changes. Actually, the first time it was passed, a lot of the things that we are talking about now, I objected to in my head. So I'm really pleased to see the changes that have been made.
I also I also agree with that. I think the changes are smart. And I think they're necessary as well.
I would second or third that as well. Good movement, good changes.
Yes. So will there be a recommendation a moment forward?
Yes, I would move to recommend that the City Council approve the proposed revisions to the accessory dwelling unit regulations in sections 20.68.100 and 20.68.110, Port Orchard Municipal Municipal Code.
I second that.
All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So let's move on to business item C, discussion and public hearing for the fireworks code revisions.
Okay, can you also see this red line on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is another red line that is consistent with the ordinance that was provided in your packet. This is one that was not brought up at last month's Planning Commission meeting. Basically, when we adopted the new zoning regulations last year, the new zones and our form-based code, we adopted a new land use table spelled out in great detail what all of our commercial and accessory uses were and what zones each use is allowed in. And at that time, the council wanted to be more restrictive of where fireworks sales could take place and to spell that out. So our land use table in 2039040 restricted fireworks sales to only to the commercial heavy CH and the industrial flex IF zones. However, that was not actually enforced last year. And it's my understanding that in the meantime, over the last year, there has been some communication between City Council, the mayor, and some of the groups that year after year continue to sell fireworks, civic and institutional groups. I think primarily churches, maybe some other groups as well, that sell fireworks as part of their fundraising efforts and make a good deal of their of their money every year. A lot of it comes from their fireworks sales. And so I think council is actually now looking for a little bit more flexibility on where those fireworks sales can take place. And so the solution that's being proposed here tonight is to revise the commercial use table in our in our land use code to allow fireworks sales as an accessory use for civic and institutional zoned properties, which would include churches, schools, some fraternal organizations, youth clubs, things like that. So what you see below in the accessory uses table would would allow fireworks as an existing as an as an accessory use to an existing civic and institutional use. As you can see, we've added it over there as permitted under the CI, civic and institutional zone. So basically, now, when you want to sell fireworks, you're going to go to the commercial use fireworks sales. You're going to see that it's allowed outright in commercial heavy and industrial flex, but you're also going to see that you should look under accessory uses. And then you see that if you have a civic and institutional use, that's also permitted as an accessory. So a church can go and be selling fireworks year round as part of its daily operations. And also, if they happen to have a vacant parcel somewhere, they can't just set up fireworks stands and operate them off of a vacant parcel somewhere that they just happen to own. This actually has to be the property on which a civic and institutional use is located and operates from. So council wanted to keep some control over, you know, where that does take place. It has to be on the usual site of a civic institution. And so we think this is a good compromise that does allow some of the existing institutions in our community to be operating and keep funding themselves and to continue their good work while making sure that we don't have fireworks sales happening in residential neighborhoods in places where we really don't want that type of use to take place, where it could be a danger to the public. And hopefully, this is something that everybody will be able to to live with and to, you know, include in a in in our permitting system for next year. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this as well.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing for the fireworks.
Excuse me.
Is there anyone that wishes to comment?
Annette Nits would like to ask a question.
Okay.
If the lot is zone commercial, could one put up the fireworks stand in that situation?
There are several different types of commercial zoning. Right now, you can, it's permitted to have fireworks sales in the commercial heavy zone, CH, and that's the only place where it's permitted outright. You have to get a permit from the city to do it.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, but in the commercial heavy zone, it's permitted outright. If you want to have it as an accessory use in the civic and institutional zone, that's where it has to be an existing authority.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions? So at this time, I want to close the public hearing for the fireworks code revisions, and we'll start the discussion.
So which properties does this specifically address? Like, are there churches that came forward and were really grumpy about the regulations that have been passed? And they're like, no, I want to sell those things?
Nick may have more information on which specific churches or or other groups may have spoken to the mayor or council about that. It's my understanding there has been some conversation in the last year about the hardship that could ensue from just a blanket prohibition on civic industrial or civic and institutional uses being prohibited.
So nobody has come forward to complain. What we did is we did not enforce the fireworks zoning regulation this past year because we did not have time to fix it prior to people being required to submit their applications for a fireworks stand. And so our goal with doing this right now is that if we can notify everybody who had a fireworks stand last year of the requirements, they will have plenty of time if they need to find a new site to find a new site. Or if, and this actually makes several of them that are non-conforming conforming because they're on church property. So so I think there's only a handful that have potentially to look for a new site. But this fixes most of the problem and gives us time to alert everyone to the issue.
Can you give us an example of somebody that was not in the spot they should have been?
There are several stands on Bethel, and only some of those are zoned commercial heavy. The I believe this, there's a stand near the Bethel Saloon. I forget which property it is on, but I believe that one is not allowed for zoning now and will still not be allowed because it's a vacant property. And there's part of the idea is you, if you're just putting somebody on a vacant property, you want them, you want somebody there keeping an eye on things. And also, you don't want it near adjacent uses where there's fire hazards. So so the vacant commercial corridor properties do not allow fireworks stands. I can pull up a zoning map if that helps.
No, but so like where Pyro Dave's goes, that one wouldn't necessarily be allowed there because that's an empty lot?
I don't know which one Pyro Dave's is.
Right across from the post office.
Correct. Those are commercial corridor, so those ones aren't allowed. And that's a situation where they would need to find a new location. And one of the ways they can find a new location would be to partner with a church and potentially set up something in a church parking lot.
Can I? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead, Sue Ann.
Sorry, I'm just curious, is this gonna, do we have a, is there a limit of how many fireworks stands that were we allowed in our town? Or is it just as many as as they want for that holiday?
Yeah, there's no limit on the number. Just on the location.
Do you think with doing this, it's going to increase, Nick? I mean, do you have a, I mean, I know it's kind of a weird question.
No, I don't think so. It may decrease if somebody can't find a new location that's approved. But I I think there's plenty of locations available, and I don't think it'll increase for no other reason that we don't have the good fireworks, good fireworks.
Okay. That was my only concern.
And that was actually the exact same thing I was going to ask, so thanks for asking it for me, Sue Ann.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, is there any more discussion on it?
I personally think the changes look. I personally think the changes look good.
So then, would you like to make a recommendation to move it forward?
Sure, I recommend that the planning commission move forward with the proposed code revisions, chapter 20.39.040.
I second that.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
All those opposed?
Can't help but wonder, you know, following on to Sue, Sue Ann's comment, how many fireworks stands are there in our city? Is that growing on an annual basis?
Too many?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I think we have about 10 or 12, and I don't believe it has changed significantly over the years.
Excellent.
Hey, Nick, doesn't the fire department have some sort of controls and/or numbers that they allow within the city limits? Or are they just the permit?
They just do the inspection prior to open, allowing them to open, to make sure that they are safe, set up safely.
They have no restrictions on the number of fireworks.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks.
And obviously not, considering how this year went.
And the city is actually doing the permitting for the fireworks stand operating, not the, not the fire department or the fire marshal.
All right, moving now to business item D, introduction to the Port Archer downtown sub area economic analysis.
So Carrie, can you make me the host again so that I can share my screen?
I've stopped sharing. What else do I need to do?
Go hover over my picture, and there's three dots next to the mute button, and you can make me the host.
There you go.
Perfect. So when I spoke earlier about the Ruby Creek Plan, I said that there was no urgency to adopting the Ruby Creek Plan. But now that I'm going to talk about the downtown plan, there is some urgency to that plan because we've got to move on and start working on the downtown plan here soon. Also, Josie, our intern, is only going to be with us for another month or so. And if we need to update significant graphics, we need to do that before she leaves. But what I wanted to show, share with you tonight is the, we have kicked off a project to prepare a downtown and county campus sub area plan. And I'm just scrolling through, looking for, trying to share my screen here. There we go. So the downtown plan, we've hired a company out of Seattle called GGLO. And they have signed a contract to help us plan and develop plans for how to increase development in and around downtown and to make it just overall a, a better, more vibrant place to live and shop and work and, and hang out. So a couple of figures that I wanted to draw your attention to in this, and they did an initial market analysis study where they pulled together a whole bunch of data, and this data is going to inform the planning process. And our contract didn't include enough funds for them to come and talk to the council committees, the full council, the planning commission. They did talk to the economic development committee, I think in May. If I'm not mistaken, Carrie, is that when that, that meeting took place? So if you want the full presentation from the consultant, you can, you can go on the city's website and listen to the, the economic development committee meeting where this was discussed. But I wanted to bring your attention to a couple of slides in this presentation. First of all, I'm on slide 38, and this slide shows the boundary of the study area, which includes downtown and then up around the courthouse and the neighborhood surrounding the courthouse. It excludes Blackjack Creek, which is the ravine that is, is difficult to develop. And then it, it includes the Bethel Corridor up to Mile Hill, including the high school and Mitchell, that general area. And so this initial market study, one of the things we did was we looked at the capacity of the land to support additional growth. And we, they started doing analysis to, to look at vacant land, underutilized land, and redevelopable land to try to figure out how much growth could potentially be accommodated in and around downtown. And so I'm going to scroll on to, to slide 44 now. Part of the project is going to do an environmental review for the entire plan that is an environmental impact statement. And it's called a planned action environmental impact statement because everything that it gets included in the plan will not have to go through future environmental review because we're doing such a thorough outreach on the front end of the planning process. That's, doing this type of process costs, you know, $50,000 to $100,000. And so that is why we're not doing it on Ruby Creek, is we don't have the capacity to do it in-house. And, and that plan was developed almost entirely in-house with the help of a consultant and an intern for some graphics. But that was the extent of, of what was prepared by, by consultants. So slide 44 shows the alternatives that are going to get considered in the environmental impact statement are very close to what they're going to look like. And the scenarios look at changes in residential and commercial capacity in downtown. And there's kind of a, there's the baseline scenario, which shows that we currently have a capacity for 1,000 residents downtown and about 580,000 square feet of commercial square footage. And then we look at, one, one alternative is a high capacity residential heavy scenario, which encourages residential over commercial. And then the other scenario dials back the residential, but increases the commercial development. And so we're kind of just taking a, what if we did a residential focus and what, what if we do a commercial focus? And which one do we prefer to move forward with? So for your information, this does include the Kitsap County Courthouse, which is a big chunk of the overall square footage under either alternatives for commercial. But in both of these, we're proposing to add anywhere between 1,000 and 1,300 additional housing units in and around downtown. And so that would be certainly a shot in the arm for small businesses downtown because it increases the number of people living in close proximity or who may be able to walk to those businesses and, and support those businesses. But of course, it also has impacts on utilities, on traffic and, and other considerations. And so as we go through the EIS, we're going to look at the impacts of each of these alternatives and try to figure out what mitigation is required for the, the various alternatives. So I didn't want to give you the full presentation tonight because we're just introducing something new, but those, that's just kind of a snapshot of what we're doing. And if any of you have any questions about something that was in this report, I'm happy to try to answer that. But the, the question's probably more appropriate for our consultant. And so if I can't answer it, I can certainly forward it to them and get you a response. And then the plan for this is that we're going to be sending out a scoping notice for the environmental impact statement, I think in, in September, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Carrie? You're muted.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, so, so we're going to start the scoping process, which is where we ask the public, what sorts of things do we need to look at as part of preparing the environmental impact statement? Then we'll outline the alternatives and release a draft environmental impact statement and at the same time that we're developing this plan. And this consultant will be coming to you this fall and asking for your feedback and using the planning commission as a forum to get information out to the public. So this is just kind of a heads up, this is coming, and this is the next big thing that we're working on as a group. So I think that's all I have to say. Carrie, was there anything I should, you should add?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. So any questions from the planning commission on this topic?
So this will be next month also? We're going to talk more about this next month?
We will likely talk about it next month, but we're, we're having a coordination meeting with our consultant in a week or two, I believe. So I don't know that we're 100% decided whether this will go forward in September or, or October to the planning commission, but it will be coming soon.
Okay.
Very pretty.
Does anybody have any questions for Nick or Carrie? So seeing none, it looks like we could move on to number five and adjourn for the night. Everybody give it that?
Yeah, this is Stephanie's quick question. So I think our next planning commission meeting, if I heard correctly, is on September 1st. Is that correct, Nick, Carrie?
Yes, it is.
Is it, being so close to the holiday weekend, might there be a benefit to reschedule it?
Well, the holiday is actually not until the 7th, right, Carrie?
Oh, it's prior to, okay. All right. Wow, it's late this year. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions or? All right, then I'm going to adjourn the planning commission meeting for August 4th. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good to see everyone. Thank you.